Thank you.
Mr. Callen.
Here.
Ms. Hyde.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Sluter.
Here.
Chairman Greenwood.
Here. Bring on the agendas to approve and adoption of the meeting. If everyone had a chance to look over the agenda. Oh, wait, yeah. amended agenda. Had a chance to look at the amended agenda and other special requirements.
I'll make a motion to approve the adopted meeting agenda for tonight.
Second. I would like to properly sign it. Any special? Seeing them. Vocal, please.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Sluter.
Aye.
Mr. Callen.
Aye.
Chairman Greenwood.
Aye. We have two citizens' common period. We have one opportunity in three minutes for individual and public hearing matters. Anything other than that, you can speak on it.
Chairman Greenwood. You get. We set the one minute.
Oh. Okay. Let's step back a second. Move back up. And then we'll do the approval of the meeting minutes for February 2013. And everyone have a chance to look them over and make sure they're correct. Are there any changes? Motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the February 7 regular meeting minutes.
Second. Motion made. Properly signed it. Approve the February 7 minutes. Any other discussion? Seeing them. Vocal, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Sluter.
Aye.
Mr. Callen.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Chairman Greenwood.
Ah. Now we can move into citizens' common period. Again, there's a one opportunity, three minutes per individual or non-public hearing matters. So anything other than what's on public hearing tonight, speak on. If you could please state your name and your district or the address if you don't have. Open. Other than.
My name is Elliot Hallard. And I want to address 681 Spotswood Drive, West Palm, Virginia. And first, I thank the board members for your service. I know this is a very active board. You guys give up a lot of time and did what you did. Just wanted you to know. We appreciate that. So since the county did. I'm in a seven lots subdivision of the river. It's at Chelsea foundation. And it's waterfront property. Obviously, so it's on its own river. And there's an ordinance that has a negative impact to our lot and presented to us as well. That's a change in ordinance, I think, probably a year and a half ago. Maybe in the gas up. And we updated the ordinances. And in total, accessory buildings. And so currently, we have a home about 100 foot off the river. As most homes generally are. It faces the water, so. And the new ordinance now states that accessory buildings is limited to one. And this conditions around lot size, RPA, and all that. Well, what it essentially does is it negatively impacts us building an additional building for storage, well, garage storage. So we have about four and a half acres of land. Some deal with lots of near five acres, five acres. And right now, under the old ordinance, I would say we build that garage and a small garage that would work. But we now have equipment because four acres of land, four and a half acres of land, cut lots of grass. So I've got a tractor and finish more boat trail, zero turn, and some implements. And they're not housed. And so I would like to be able to build an additional garage and keep it with the, the, or catch you the home itself. Out between the home and the road. And this ordinance is stating that the home in front of the house is between the, the, the house and the road, not the house and the river. So we cannot build behind this because of the river. And we would like to build an additional accessory building to house this. So that's sort of the long and the short of it. And I think I have some folks here that are probably going to speak to the same issue. So what I'm asking the board is, would you make consideration to alleviate this negative impact on lot owners on the river? It's, it's also, it faces a private road. So it's a private road that comes in. We're a mile off of any asphalt public road. So this is, you know, I'm sure there's other lots on, on the river on that, without a monkey that, you know, would be on the road. You know, this thing still negative impacts the availability to build any additional accessory buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Howard. He's over in Beverly Hills. And I live at 681 Spotswood Drive. And Chairman, I want to thank you and your staff for helping us and spending time with us and meeting with us. It made a big difference for us. For new ordinance, when we built our home, we built it at the time, several years ago, with the front facing the river. So of course, on five acres, you're going to try to build as close as you can, right? So that is the design of our home is the front faces the river. But now it's considered because we have a small porch on the backside of our home, that that is the front. Anybody that builds down there has two home fronts. It's in the back and it's in the front. The river has the prettiest bill on all of them. I would like to invite you to come look anytime you'd like to. It is a gorgeous piece of property. One is local property. And we maintain one in the four miles of that road is private. So we do have a unique look over there. If you look at the house facing the river, it's obviously the front faces the river. I would love you to come see it. After looking at Google Maps and other counties, many homes were built with buildings back behind it, just like ours. No one buys five acres and tries to put that on the back of their lot with two and a half football fields in front of them to look at the river. We could have built all the buildings, we want it that way. That would really be tight. We as landowners have decided with one allowable building, whether we want to protect our animals, protect our cars, or protect farm equipment. It makes it really limited. So you buy a nice tractor that sits outside and just rust. Keep in mind, six of the seven lots have three to four acres. I mean, some of them, I mean, that they maintain, cut grass or takes four, five hours. This is nothing fast. So like Elliot said, we have, we also have subject systems. We have wells. We have things that, you know, that stop us from being able to put buildings in those areas. I made calls to two counties. I stopped after two counties because I knew it was going to be the same information every time. I called Michael Flag, the Hanover County plan, he's a planning permission manager. Hanover County that says the front of the house to be facing the river, they want. Buildings can be built behind the house considering lots setbacks and easements. It's like ours is. That's like it's not today with this ordinance. Most importantly, the landowner gets to decide in Hanover County. I called Kenny Vaughn, New Kent County zoning administrator. They are more lenient than Hanover. However, the landowner consider, however, they want to place their house. That front can be in, if it can build the road, it can build the river. They decide. I'm appealing to you guys to please look at this new ordinance and see how it really hurts people that are purchasing land on the river. All of a sudden, we have three acres we can't do anything with. I mean, really, isn't, shouldn't it be changed into actions, really? I'm going to the board to look at a new ordinance and change it to whatever we, what, what we had before this one. We love the river. We love this county. We want to support the county. And we definitely, you know, really appreciate all the people who look. And we really did, it means a lot to us. Thanks for listening. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Lily in Fox, and I live at 683 Spotswood. Really, I only have a small thing to say, and that is that we bought almost five acres there for our forever home. And after we bought it, we built a house on about an acre. There's about four acres behind our house. And now we're being told that we can't do anything with that four acres. We can't put a building on it. We, we can't do anything with it. And yet, I could, in all honesty, if I was a bad person, I can let the grass grow up to my neck and have all kinds of junk. We want a, we want a beautiful home. We want a beautiful place to be. We want to enjoy the last parts of our life. And we don't want to have to do it with thinking about what can we or can we not do. And, you know, really, what we will be doing with those last four acres, if you all pass this, is that we'll be mowing, really, essentially, King William County's grass because it will be nothing else to us but grass. But thank you all very much.
Good evening. I want to thank you, but I may come up and say a few words. There's not a whole lot I can add to what the pre-keeper said. The only thing is that if you stop and think about it in barrel, I think, I don't know, there's a lot more about this. And if you're a waterfront property, a person owns it, is going to build, for lack of a better word, a golden island lot. So you can get as many homes as possible. So that restricts people who own waterfront property because their lot is not very wide. Then you're encumbered by the RPA. And in Spotswood, we're also encumbered by the power lines. So like I said, we've got a lot of land that I don't live there yet, thinking about building. This probably isn't going to help me. I want to build a garage that aesthetically matches my house. I want it off to what I call the side, but what the county calls in front. But anyway, maybe it's to help some people down the road to be able to put a building where they want to. And if you stop and think about it, Spotswood has one thing that I don't know another place in the county has. We are controlled by the historical society. So we are not going to put a piece of shit or, or anything like that. You gotta, you gotta be okay by the historical society. And none of us would have invested this much money to put trash in front of our house anyway. And the other point, Elliot brought it up, is that we're, we're at least three quarters of a mile off of any public road. So no public people are going to want to see our homes. And the last thing I'd like to say is that in my trying to find out what I can do and cannot do, Christina has helped me out a lot, has guided me a lot. And I want to thank her for doing that. She's great at what she does. She's helpful. And I know there were times that she wanted to kind of knock me out of the door, but she's been very helpful. She's an asset to this county, and I just want to thank her for being there. Thank you.
If anyone else with names. Do you have anybody online that wishes to speak?
Yes, sir. Nobody signed up.
Seeing no one else, we go, of course. As we've changed the names, so citizens and stuff, we're here. The lawyer told us we're supposed to call it publicly here. So citizens' common period. Now closed. So now, oh, well, we did have a request. Or supervisors doesn't usually do this. And I think there's a planning commission to either census, there's a lot of issues to seem to be dealing with ordinance. I'll take the poll of the board to see if maybe we would like to just take something that maybe we'll discuss something later. Would that be agreeable? Would not. Oh, no, this is for, so, oh, you want to do an actual public hearing? Deal with the comments. Okay. We'll just speak on it after. So I mean, happy public hearing. So if you could just stay around a little bit. Right now, we'll move on to the ordinance, public hearing. It is perceived to be zero towards 2022. And I've been told that the property owner has been sold. It's not, names haven't changed. So it's not, what is it now? You said, I guess we'll ask to share a couple of speed line that you tell you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, before we proceed, any further questions? Even then, Rob, you're welcome.
Okay, the owner is under Irondale, Virginia LLC. If the applicant is still the same, Mr. Baker, who is also here tonight, to give you a small presentation and answer any questions as well. So they are requesting a conditional use permit for 180 apartment units. This property is on X Mount parcel 21-50B. It's located on Route 30 in Union Road, and it's almost across from the park entrance. This property will be available to Philip Wired Sewer. It's approximately 8.93 acres. It's currently zone R1. And in addition to the apartments, they're also proposing to build a clubhouse for, was part of the amenities that will be provided. And this parcel was previously part of the McCully Park Division. It's currently a wooded undeveloped parcel. It is surrounded by R1. It does have to be run. Well, actually, the library site and the McCully Park character are right beside. That's the property right beside it. And then directly across is the park, which is an AC. They have been working with BDOT. They did some traffic impact analysis. And BDOT did provide some comments in a letter that's in your packet dated February 16. And of course, once they addressed BDOT comments, if they made any changes, it'll need to go back to BDOT for review and approval. So this area is shown to be residential. There are no restrictions that went down far from using the property. Under our comprehensive plan, it calls for diversified housing to facilitate, say, quality housing and diverse housing types for persons of all ages, physical needs, and income. This area of central garage is positioned as the major central business and development. It is identified for growth of both. The central district is the most developed area in the county with business industry and more concentrated residential. As it stands, this application meets housing goals, you know, the fair content plan. We do have a small presentation on it. This is the property that they're proposing to put the apartments in. And you can see everything around it is R1. And then the property in the white is what we just had at another public hearing. And this is what they are proposing to do, the five buildings and the clubhouse. They did submit some elevation renderings. And they are planning to keep it longer all the way throughout it. So I did talk with the fire department. He does have some concerns about a fire truck being able to maneuver through the apartment complex. A fire truck will need 100 inches or 8.3 feet. And they will also have ten fire hydrants to be within 100 feet of every fire truck connection on each building. Wasn't really able to do a thorough review yet. But he does want it to be taken into account that he would need that amount of space to be able to maneuver through there. And it's going to be hard to turn our truck along the back. So he didn't know, maybe they could consider a filing behind each building on each side. And that may be a possibility. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Baker. He also has a, not a paraplane, but just a verbal presentation for you. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My result, mission on my paper, taking development resource and I'm on. I am a by trade, working with a recent purchaser under that Irondale, Virginia LLC entity. Trying to, to, everything on your staff has been a comprehensive plan, cost, it has a made a growth area. And that suggests we did them, they're guessing, including multi-family dwellings appropriate. With that, we have the request for the conditional use permit. Both the construction of a multi-family dwelling complex with accessory parking, residential amenities on this market rate, minutes of high quality. Getting closer to the site plan. And could you maybe put it on that site plan slide?
Oh, I'm sure.
The plus in five, three-story buildings, there are 36 dwellings in each building for total 180. Clubhouse and pool are also proposed.
They're having trouble here.
Maybe if I. So 36 dwelling units, total 180. Clubhouse and pool are also proposed. They're centrally located at the front, near the entry to the site, neighbors. Ample parking spaces, 327 spaces proposed for the 180 units. That's 1.8 per unit. And it's actually 1.7 spaces per bedroom, so plenty of parking for residents, plenty of parking for guests. There is an extensive designated buffer that's proposed surrounding the site to retain. It would screen it from normally King William Road, also adjacent neighbors. A single divided entrance is divided along King William Road. So no traffic through adjacent neighborhoods. BDOT approved traffic in that analysis has been completed. The entrance, which is shown here, is, has been moved to, I guess that would be the north and west along the frontage as a request of BDOT. And also the sheltered left turn in is proposed, which is consistent with, again, was agreeable with BDOT as well. In terms of the elevations, yes, here we utilize durable cementitious siding. That's, that's already planned. We've installed as a mix of vertical board and horizontal lap siding. Plans also show that stone accents may be used in some areas as well. Clubhouse would be of a compatible design. In terms of the actual units, it's a mix of the one bed, two bed units, and two beds, two bathrooms. With the terominous, those being one bed, two bed units. The layouts are modern, they're large and open. They have ample kitchen space. They have survival peninsula eat-in arrangements, which open the living areas, giving them more, more open and modern feel. And then they have things like within the units, walk-in closets, unsweet baths, individual washer and dryer within the units. In terms of our neighborhood outreach, we did send letters out to all property owners with 150 feet of good people. We did notice for the condition use permit itself. We held a meeting on February 7th addressing the question. We did have several property owners there that needed, really have a conversation. We didn't hear any conversation. It concerns at that time, I will say that the one we did, and that meeting is here tonight, and they may have some issues just from a big conversation at the beginning of the meeting. We certainly want to thank Sheri for, for helping us through the process. We give you your recommendation for it and respect your request recognition. We do expect your, appreciate your time. And so you try to answer any questions you have. That's sort of like, we make some stuff available, it's, it's appropriate after them, like any public concerns.
Important question before. I've got one. Mr. Graham indicated that there were some, some fire lane concerns or access for the firecoats. Have you all considered that, that the advantage?
I think that's the first we've heard that concern. That was a conversation that happened. They, they came out. We got around comments that we draft, that you did address. I think the staff satisfaction, if there's a concern there, you know, and I would defer to staff to some extent. If, if within this process, there's the ability to address that, and we can do within this concept, and certainly, to work with you on that. You know, obviously, there's something, I just want more of these to be represented as part of the concept. Or if that's something we can agree to do or agree to work through with you at, at site. So that's a little bit of a question to answer your question. I apologize for that. But that's the first that we've heard is, is tonight. That's certainly the kind of thing we expected to work through when here, though.
My question on the building layout, that you say in that, in the layout, that you, you will have elevators. But the elevator space is not shown on the layout.
Yeah, that's actually.
I'm looking at this.
Yeah, I don't think those are, those are walk-ups. That's not, there's not an elevator.
Walk-ups. It's, it's age restricted, but you're not going to go.
These, these are actually not age restricted. They may appeal to, they may appeal to some folks, the ones who are tired, I mean, age in place, but that restriction's not in place.
So they, so they will be walk-ups entirely. I had a little bit of a back statement, and the out, this apparently pretty well approved everything. We did move the entrance to accommodate a, so it wasn't the, the, that turned into the recreation area. Excuse me, just a minute. The one, one thing I was concerned with when this first came out, 180 apartments, the density of development. And knowing 180 departments are going to generate 250 vehicles per day. And that, that was a concern to me, but because of the impact that might have on the route, 250 intersection. But going through that impact statement, looking at the big hour traffic, it does look like it won't be any, any or much worse, very little worse than the current condition. So I don't see that as a problem. There is a comment in the letter from BDOT about a storage lane. Then I'm a little confused on whether that storage lane is a left turn lane from 360 going into Route 30. It's a 300-foot storage lane. And then the Mr. Baker, or not Mr. Baker, but Mr. Butler with BDOT stated that he was in agreement that, with that 300-foot storage lane, that, but it may be required. I was a little confused by his comment there. But are we talking about that left turn storage lane off of 360?
So there were two left, one left, one left-hand turn lane was into the site. So that was the, the third comment where they said we're, we're in agreement with that being the by. The second comment on that letter refers to, sort of, I guess, Portland, 360, turning left on 30. And there, there's, there's a stacking distance that they feel based on, I guess, what's happening with. Their stacking distance that they feel based on, I guess, what happened with uh. Come and some of their development area that they perceive that's already. And be absorbed by those developments and that we may be adding to that to some extent. And I think so, but that's a discussion our traffic engineers is continuing to talk about VDOT and with the site plan as to to what extent. This development, you know, to the site plan review, you're obligated to to uh. Work on off-site improvements to the extent that they're substantially generated from by development. I don't know if that ends up being some sort of pro that share of that improvement along with. Sure, he needs another development or a fifth, and that'd be. You know, something we're not substantially uh. We're not substantially causing. The other thing is that this is. You know, we are uh, we're also in your package, you'll see from HRs that there's a letter on there talking about how the capacity is not going to be there until. And that, at that point was twenty twenty four, the most recent correspondence we've had, which was this year uh is indicating twenty twenty five, so this is something that's. You know, a couple of years out, so but I'm sure when we look at site plan, we look at some analysis of that, is that we have staff and not there at that particular intersection.
And you're also a peddled out this two thousand twenty eight.
Yep, I think that's probably accurate unless I don't know how stable that twenty twenty five number is, because that's changed, right? Over the course of even me just working on it.
Another question I had was fire suppression. I think we got water for that site now, but for three stories, uh, what are you doing for pressure?
When you have the construction. Your permitting process, but but uh, man, this is a strange word, so.
And the other comment I had, just uh, comment of my own, basically, but uh, and looking at this site, I originally. Don't like, but I was looking at the safety shirt at this time, but nonetheless, any apartment or interest or the safety shirt. Just apartments, we got a lot of folks there that are. Going to be wanting to get to the shopping center relatively close to the shopping center. If you don't want to see people, they have to drive there, they're able to walk and. I was looking at uh, not, we should have sidewalks on the way up among three sixty shopping center, but. Looking at the current road configuration, the width of the structure of the road. Uh, you got a couple of veins there, there's just no way, no reasonable way to put sidewalk in there now, so. I would be suggesting to the. Plan permission that um. We recommend to the board and board supervisors that the county uh meet with and discuss with. VDOT project to upgrade that whole corridor all the way up to beyond that road. To be able to provide a roadway structure that will accommodate four lanes plus turn lanes. I don't, but VDOT's uh, the way they work now, they don't give much of a road count, so they don't know how. Successful we can be at that, but they've also said that where. We do have major construction going, but such projects could be considered. So I would encourage the planning provision to suggest that the board supervisor that you meet with VDOT. Future improvement with that corridor. And that's about all I had. Thank you.
I just have one question during your presentation. I think you mentioned um that. There's a predominant for one bedroom apartments. Um, is there a reasoning behind the one with the one bedroom versus more of the two bedroom?
It's pretty uh, like that's, you know, we do a lot of work closer to individuals as well and. Parking ability perspective, the ones seem to be more popular, more they're 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 right, they're right more quickly and and uh. And I think the twos and threes hang around longer, so they are as predominant, one better, that's consistent kind of with what we see in other locations as well. Well, I'm more the zoning guy than the than the multi-family marketing guy to know exactly why that is. But it's, it's a, it's an interesting, it's an interesting phenomenon. Like, you know, I guess from a county perspective. You know, I'm talking about one bedrooms. You, you have a chance to to uh. Yes, we workforce housing for, you know, younger folks, it might be a teacher or. A soccer, yeah, service provider of some type, or you know, individuals that may want to. Work at some new commercial that's happening in the area. And maybe something smaller that someone can retire into, or or even a a younger individual that is. You know, for instance, a child of some within the county that that wants to stay closer to home to get started rather than have to go. You know, now I'm reaching the closer image, trying to do that, so. I mean, I think there's a market, I think, for the one bedroom. Some of the other things that's going to keep the, you're always worried about tools, I imagine, right? And and the one you, one bedroom units are particularly not good.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just to go on that, do you, do you know the ratio between the?
Oh, yes, there it's one hundred sixty five of the one bedroom and then and then fifteen of the of the two bed, so. Some of those one bedrooms are larger, though. They're, they're, you know, going on eight hundred square feet, so. I just said Claire, that's great, that's great. She's, I don't know if they went out to you or not, but. Has somebody old supervisors on here that's on date or something. What is it that they're waiting, maybe there might be some questions back, I'll open the. For the public hearing, it is the same way. Uh, each event has one opportunity, three minutes, so just speak on this issue and please state your name and your address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Jessica Bunn. I live at one twenty four Central Crossing Paris, which is one of the homes on the map that backs directly up to the proposed development. You'll see it's the home or the parking lot faces into the backyard, right in the middle. Um, I'm here today to ask you to oppose the application for the conditional use permit. I want to take a moment to put everything in the context. I'm, I'm new to this area, but it helps me to orient myself. But we are here this evening because the proposed development is not permitted by right under the property's current zoning. In order for the proposed high density multi-family dwellings. To be built, the applicant must obtain a special exception from the current zoning you all, planning commissions and the board supervisors. This means that you all, the members of the planning commission and making this decision, get to choose the winners and losers for the outcome of whether this is granted. I ask you to take a moment to consider who will be the winners and who will be the losers if the application is indeed granted. First, the losers. The losers are the existing residents on Central Crossing Paris, and in particular, the residents of the six homes. That immediately abide the proposed development, which includes fire. If this application is approved and the development is built, we will have five towering apartment buildings and a large parking lot. As well as a clubhouse and a pool immediately behind our homes. The buildings will be, and I have little insurance on this from the community, the the community meeting, about fifteen or forty feet behind our homes. I've heard talk about the buffer, but the buffer that's there now is old growth trees you see straight through them. It doesn't accomplish much in the buffer. But the buildings, we were told, would tower forty to fifty feet above our homes. And what will this bring to us? It will bring noise. As you heard, a hundred eighty units, three hundred fifty seven parking spaces, mostly one bedroom apartments, as Commissioner Height mentioned. And the proportion surprised me, a hundred sixty five one bedroom, fifteen two bedroom. Who's going to live there? Who is this geared for? It's not families. Will bring a lot of noise. It will bring light to our property from the buildings, the units, the street lamps in the parking lot, to cars in the parking lot. And again, if you look at the map, there's parking spaces spacing directly into my hole. I'm going to have headlights in my kitchen and my master bedroom and my master bathroom. From this development. It'll bring a lack of privacy because the buildings in the lot are so close to our homes. Additionally, there are balconies on the buildings that will overlook our homes and our backyards. The buildings will also block sunlight from our homes and our backyards. So I submit to you that this high density development directly behind our homes will upend the character and nature of our neighborhood and the enjoyment of our property. Also, this development will significantly impact our property value. People like my husband and myself, we are young working professionals. We have worked years to build equity in our homes. We have finally achieved some equity in our home, and this project will probably significantly impact that. And this leads us to the question of who is the winner if the application is granted? The winner will be the applicant. Who will be permitted to develop the property in a manner that maximizes the profit. You heard that one bedroom's maximized profit. That's why they focused on one bedroom units. Last minute, there are a number of other potential alternative uses for this property. That could be pursued that are much more appropriate to the existing character and nature of the area and considerate to the existing neighbors. This is where you, the planning commission, come in and get to decide. Should this, this conditional use permit be granted, I ask you to think of the current residents. We live in King William because of its rural and peaceful nature. At no point we have contemplated that we'd be facing a high density, multi-family development directly behind us behind our home. We don't expect to live in short term for Northern Virginia. We're surprised by this. We know that the existing zoning is there to protect us. We ask you to stick with it and not grant this exception. In closing, I ask you, the members of the commission, to think of the significant impacts of the requests of the exemption will cause the existing residents. Again, there are other potential uses for this property that are not this high density, multi-family dwelling development. I ask you to deny the application. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
You have any others? Anyone online?
There's no one that's signed up, I'm sorry.
Seeing no one else in the audience, we will close. Then we'll go into discussion. Board members to have any comments, sorry.
I think I have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, to Sheri and staff, did we have anyone else that reached out um either for or against um the conditional use permit?
We've had a few people come in and firing, but they did not express whether they were for or against it. I don't know if anybody can help with that.
No. Um, I know we've talked about some fire suppression questions um. During the presentation, et cetera, um. Is there a specific requirement already in our ordinances um for a three story building? Um, to make sure that fire suppression is provided?
Well, the building code is going to require that the three story structure be sprinkled.
Okay.
And of course, they are going to have to build that to the building code, and they're going to need to meet the fire codes. Uh, which they will have to have uh fire department connection in each building. They will have high fire hydrants. Um, so that is one thing. We do have in the ordinance, the next height was forty five feet. So they would not be able to go before you have to be regardless. Um, since this is a conditional use permit, you could move that, one of the conditions is that they will have to meet all the requirements of the. In a fire code and then the fire department.
And would we need to, if so, choose them, because again, I'm the first one to ask questions. Um, because of the way our ordinance is written um to the forty five limit. Would we need to state that as part of our conditions if that's what we chose to make sure that there was? No misinterpretation as far as what would be allowed?
You could put that as one of your conditions, but it is covered in the ordinance. So when they come in for zoning approval, that would be one thing we would look forward to make sure that the height would not exceed forty five feet.
Um, and then as um. Our speaker also asked um the buffering um surrounding the property. What would the requirements be?
And that is something else that you can address and then CUP as one of the conditions that they have a a certain width of the block of water. Of course, along, you know, thirty and the TCO, you're going to have to do a dedicated buffer to a degree, but around. The other um three sides, this each side in the rear. You you may want to, you know, increase a buffer or make sure that they keep a buffer of a certain width.
Mr. Graham, with the buffer, sorry, as in relates to the buffer, is it just a vegetative buffer in the plan? Is that all that is?
Um, I know at most of the time they could do fencing and buffering. Maybe something that you would want them to do both at, because there are certain times of the year that. Sometimes we don't have the vegetation that's going to hide everything that it needs to.
And then I had one more question related to that, um since you mentioned um discussions um. With with the fire chief as far as um a potential for a fire lane. Is there enough um? Space to be able to have the appropriate buffering, a fire lane and the proposed buildings and parking that we've seen on the.
Looking at it, it looks like he would be able to get that far lane directly behind the building. Um, of course, that's going to limit the use for the tenants to not be able to use that back there unless they are in the filing and you certainly want to keep that open. And they're going to want it paved or. Um, for the trucks, they're not going to want it to be dirt or or gravel. They're going to want a good firm. Surface for the trucks to drive back there.
And if I may, is what would staff's recommendation be as far as that's concerned if we were to go to?
If you recommend a critical, we would recommend that one of the conditions be that they meet all the requirements of the fire permit. That way we know that the trucks are are going to be able to get back through there to get to the to the buildings. That's probably the main safety right now, that especially since. There, then the front where everybody's parked, it's going to be hard to get up. It looks like it's going to be hard to get a fire truck through there.
Um, yeah, oh, the buffer, went back to that again, they. Landcase section for buffers requires. One evergreen tree per seven linear feet. With buffer, which shall be placed in two staggered rows. And there will be one, one under store tree per twenty five feet, one citrus tree per six to seven feet. And then one shelf per three linear feet of buffer. What is the width of buffer area that they are showing?
I don't have it shown on here.
I don't see it in the.
We didn't do just the tree area. That's the leading, I weigh thirty five.
You know, it's not on there. That backs are noted. You know, I would say it's approximately forty feet on the south and west. And seventy five feet on the on the east along the road.
There's remember, vegetation is only required upon thirty, right, because it's only.
From the TCO.
Right, and because they look like they've added all the way around, so we can. When they show it, we can still put something.
We could, because it's.
Yeah, they, they have to, but they're showing it.
Any other conditions that continues, as a landscape buffer shall be required for commercial or industrial zone development. as a landscape buffer shall be required for commercial or industrial zone development, but it's an agricultural or residential zone district. Or for multi-family residential development. But any properties on A, E, R, R, or landscape buffer shall be approved by the zone administrator. And then the second thing, it says, any above conditions, a continuous six foot high buffer within maximum width of twenty five feet shall be required. And then it tells what buffer shall consist of with the trees. Um, the one concern I have is the height of the trees when planted. I think it says, uh, someplace in here, that the tree shall be I believe that evergreen tree shall be four feet high. I believe as a condition, we should require, uh, larger stock. Talk about that, but, uh, I would say at the beginning, stop for those, for the double line of evergreens to be at the big foot.
Yeah, it does have something in there on fencing as well.
That's what I wanted to say. We could maybe put fencing, require fencing on that side, especially where the lady was speaking about the sudden event, no resters, just woodland. Like she said, the whole of these streets are already high, maybe a fence in addition to the evergreens behind it and we keep, like she said, that one row of parking would have lights coming up so the trees are no leaves on, at least the fence would stop.
The trees, you can be using every week.
The trees are existing. They would just leave that, uh, good area natural.
Could they?
Could they add additional?
Leave it natural, but in that particular case, it's next to those houses. I think we need something better than just connect.
And we could require a fence on the, uh, property line side. Um, and that would also be a security as well. So people aren't cutting in between. And as far as lighting, they would not be able to shine the lights once they'd be adjacent, um, neighbors or on the path to the road. Would it be directed down and?
And she was saying maybe, I didn't see any, like I said, the plan isn't that specific, maybe owner having are there street lights in this area that will see any, but maybe there aren't any lights that she's saying residual light maybe comes at the development. Do you know if there's pole lights in there? Anywhere?
Yeah. There'll be a site plan that they like to.
We might have to approve the type of lining, which is used in the box style.
That would be a conditional use thing too. None of it can be facing that way blocked.
They, they cannot, um, go out and they have to be shielded from the, from the neighbors and but that is also something you can, you know, list as a condition if you find.
Ms. Graham, the, uh, the adjacent parcel is the, um, age restricted townhomes, correct?
Correct.
So there will at some point be units on that property that will back up to this as well.
It will.
And just to have some foresight, if we're going to do, recommend a requirement of fencing on one side, I would recommend we do it on the opposite side as well.
We could require that, but next advocate, since there's nothing there now, they can be provided, says there will be ones encouraging on them. I mean, that's.
Well, we already approved that one.
Oh, yeah. Does it, nothing is in there? I don't remember. Do you remember if there was? If that's all right, yeah. I guess it would have to be a conditional use.
I know if it was my house, it was very good, this development going in, I would, I would want something more of a, that you take a proper, um, official, you know, a solid fencing of some sort.
Get this, that, who can maybe answer? We speak, does he see him?
I mean, agree with the fence.
I would like to just, I, I had a. Yeah. What I was going to suggest, you know, we just talked about the capacity issues and this is not, it's not how far we, this doesn't have to happen that quickly. Uh, I feel like there's some concerns. And you're kind of struggling to think how we're going to condition this so it can move forward next month when the reality is it doesn't necessarily move forward next month. I wouldn't be opposed to, one thing I'm worried about is, uh, you know, just getting a look at what exactly what the farmer is looking for and getting a sense of how that impacts the, the plan and to what extent it's going to change. I mean, we, we could, we never want to, you know, necessarily want to defer, but I think sometimes it makes sense. It might make sense to defer on back with a plan and after we've had a chance to have that, get that comment, meet with the fire marshal. Um, and then we can also contemplate some additional, you know, to what extent, you know, we think, which might be appropriate and where can we target and retaining, we can get a width on that actual buffer. Uh, you know, since we're augmented or fencing and that sort of thing. So, um, I just, you know, a lot, oftentimes my clients are, are no go go, which is the case in, in that industry, but this is unique. But we don't have to be in a hurry here. I would be perfectly happy with that. We're actually in a, that type of situation. Yeah, I, I, so, but I think, I, I, what I don't want to get is any paid, that's additional approval. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't maybe make sense. Um, maybe order on something that we don't have until next month, if that makes sense. I hate to take this road, but I, I'd rather take a moment to make sure we get all the details of it. In particular, the fire marshal's concern.
We don't want to do that. And I think we're already kind of, like, here and if you come back next month, I guess, so ideas about the fire lanes, if that's possible, the depths of the buffers and maybe some additions.
Well, you can see, like, where we're parked right now, you can see how we start putting fire lanes in, that's going to compress things. We might lose some parking and if we have this coming out and it's, it's worth over three hundred parking spaces, we lose some parking trying to achieve that. We still have a surplus of parking. But I guess my concern would be coming out of that and approval that says, I have this number of parking spaces. Now I'm trying to squeeze more into that box in terms of also ringing it with, with fire roads. And, uh, I don't, I don't, I want to make sure we get something that works that, that site plan, uh, there aren't conditions that are not compatible.
Would one month be, would one month be?
Yeah. You'll be pretty quick on, on the chase. It could, if, I guess, we'd ask staff to have that conversation, fire marshal.
If, like, um, give me a call tomorrow and I will, I'll, with Chief, maybe we can sit down with you and go over what's the requirements are going to be, and what are you going to do.
Yeah, maybe that would be helpful and then we can, you need to intelligently, so we're all on the same page and know we're getting, coming out the other side. Appreciate that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, we'll have a couple more questions I'd like to ask Sherry just before we get to that stage, if you don't mind. So as far as, um, some of the other, um, developments we've approved recently, I know that this is the target area for, um, our density of housing. Um, what do we see as far as what the county needs from the perspective of the one bedroom and the two bedroom apartments?
Um, I will agree with Mr. Baker with the one bed. Apartments are needed. I mean, we don't have housing here. With the one bedrooms, you're going to have your single person or a couple, you're not going to have the children, which is going to um, burden the end of the school system. So that's going to limit how many larger families would live in there. So, so that is a good thing. But another thing is we want businesses to come in. But the employees that are working in these businesses, they need a place to stay. And we, we don't have any housing like this. I mean, we have some apartments here, but they're all full. There, there's none available. So there's a big need for, you know, housing for apartments and so forth. And to get the businesses, they want to see, they call it the rooftops. They, they want to see housing here in order to bring their business here. I don't know how much more we're going to need. I know, you know, with that, several pretty good sized, um, developments approved recently. So I'm hoping that we'll start seeing some of these businesses coming in.
Thank you. And do you have any, um, construction congestion concerns? Um, considering all, all of these developments that, um, we already are in the process of, you know, either approval or review, um, are all in the general vicinity?
Well, as Mr. Baker said, he's not going to start right away. Um, I did talk with, um, the developer of the other two, the sixty four major strip pit and then the hundred and twenty townhomes. He is getting ready. He wants to start both of those projects as soon as possible. So you will see those two, um, start there as soon as I think. And the other one, um, that's not going to go that far down. But that's probably going to come on and off of, uh, re sixty majority of the time.
And I just had one more comment related to, um, what you just mentioned about, um, them not wanting to start right away. Um, I know it, it's been something that's come up in the past as far as conditional use permits, um, that have come before us, that if we don't, um, ask for some type of timeframe for construction to begin or building permanent will be issued, that things linger and then things change. Um, I'm just wondering if that's one of the things that if, whether we table this or what decision we make tonight, um, if we were to, um, place some type of conditions on, um, this, would we want to consider something to that effect? Um, it was just something I thought I would throw out there for the planning commission.
Which is the project starting within two years of approval.
Right. Otherwise, they would think the.
Right now, no.
It's a pleasure. Given the month, they let them up, come back and some of these answers and then.
I respect Mr. Baker's big, uh, work coming about, um, making sure everything, getting this right. One would recommend it for a, to a more special.
I am too, and I would like to see that staff try to summarize some of the things that we've brought up as far as the conditions are concerned. Um, other than just, you know, whatever might be discussed, um, with the applicant in that timeframe. If that's okay with the rest of it.
We don't need to go on the tables. We need a motion to take that. Though someone may, on aggression tables. Okay, you should spend table, gentlemen. The maximum, instead of giving up the unconsidered, we're going to air this, care to worry about discussion, maybe about what she was talking about in the citizens' comment period, which I'll, yes. I'm thinking that we had had this brought up before, so maybe we want to bring it up in a work session. Something to look into that we had.
It's, it's our work session.
Oh, so that's, so that's good to tell everybody. It is coming up in work sessions, we might even discuss that, that exact matter. Do you know, maybe the next one or will it be?
We have it on the agenda for tonight. Uh, we have several things on the agenda. So I, I guess it depends on time wise, but we're good.
If you want to stick around, we in our work session tonight, we probably discussed that exact topic. And, you know.
Since they're here, we could go ahead and discuss that first, if that's okay to share.
Oh. Okay, let's do that the first thing on the work session after our news. There's much more left, so, did it come up pretty quick? Thank you. And so we'll move into unfinished business. Sherry, we have. See.
We follow our unfinished business of the, the work session.
Like you'll just wait on that. So we'll move into new business. Okay, then we'll move into staff and our special committee.
Oh, I may, yes, um, I would like to be considered of the, um, number two, the interview panel for the, um, on the interview panel for BBA. That's on the agenda.
We have, we did not have to, um, go to nominate somebody so we could go off the agenda that was.
That's what I was thinking.
Was on the agenda.
Oh. And can, uh, I said, Mr. Hashkra, can an extra person come just sit in or is that not allowed?
At the interviews? No, sir. It's, uh, that's typically not, uh, because there is a, a level confidentiality involved with the applicant in, uh, in the process.
I thought that, it's, it's, thanks. Now, moving into your staff and our special committee for, first one has, ends your board's classes.
I saw, I have emailed the reports to save a few trees. And so we started last month with a new report that summarizes the types of permits, um, so that you can see those. So that started at the beginning of this year. So it breaks them down into, um, the new single family dwellings, accessory structures, and signs, variances, um, the different types of permits. And so you can see that in the month of February, we actually issued forty four zoning permits. And it breaks it down into the different categories. So my request to the planning commission, um, is to do away with one of the reports that didn't give a lot of information and it was the, um, individual types of zoning permits. Because we're now breaking it down into the very first report that you see in your packet. And then, and then the custom report, the custom report gives you the overall information, um, with the permit numbers, the addresses, and all of the information, um, into that report. So you're getting all of the full information instead of it broken down into many different reports. So we tried to go back and rearrange some reports and amendments and then into this report. Um, so you get more details than what you all were getting before. And so that would be my, um, request to the planning commission, if you all are amenable to that.
I am.
And hopefully it gives you more detail than what you all were getting before.
They were really good to begin with, so we, more detail, I think we could be better. Thanks a lot.
So if you have any questions, feel free to ask. We've been trying to get them out at the very beginning of the month, um, so that you all have more time to review them.
Yeah, but the violation laws, is that all you talk about, same thing all together?
I'm sorry.
I don't know, actually moving into the violation laws, a combination of every, all three of them.
All of them. But if you have any questions about the violation laws, it's open for that.
Move into mission comments.
Um, I would just like to say, I, I have seen a tremendous turnaround, uh, in, in the permanent process and, and I commend staff for that. We're getting permits and applications turned around a lot faster, which makes my life easier and, and people that we're dealing with life a lot easier. Um, and we have seen a, a huge push forward in that, which is, I think, really good news for everybody. I would like to say we, we have a, a newly elected treasurer. I would like to say wish her good luck and hope that we can move forward and, and a positive badge on that. But that's it.
Yeah, Mr. Baker?
Unusual to be having to come in at a good point.
Oh, I know.
I, I do appreciate everybody coming out. More than anything, though, I appreciate the staff, uh, working with the, uh, individuals that we're going to, that we're going to talk it out, talk with, uh, in our next session. I think it's good to open this up to, to get, get those folks in and get their comments as they've given us to, to work with and to try and resolve this. And other than that, just generally, um, I thank the staff for all they've done and moving ahead. Also, I will mention Also, I will mention that, um, I was at board supervisory meeting last night and I am very pleased with the, budget that, um, Mr. Schraft put forth, uh, I think, looking at our comprehensive plan, uh, we've included, or he has included several things in, in the comprehensive plan, in the, uh, upcoming budget. I'm pleased to see that. And I hope that, um, that our board will go along with the budget, the budget that's, that's presented. But, uh, I just wanted to go, when that is, it was the tension, because, uh, it does, uh, reflect what our comprehensive plan shows.
And that's going to get another hour or two. I, I did, we did hear several people speak tonight, um, and several gave, uh, commendations to the staff for their assistance, um, and the current staff as well on, uh, on that. I think it's exactly the type of thing we need to hear, um, from people that have experiences, um, dealing with our, our county staff who want to get a positive experience, and I'm glad to hear that, uh. See that we have, uh, a lot of stuff on our work session agenda, um, and it's a, I think it's a reflection of just how much we truly have going on in this county right now. A lot of developments, um, soon, soon to come, um, and a lot of growth that, uh, that we'll be seeing over the next several years and, um, and we really need to keep a proactive look to try to get ahead of the challenges that we're going to face and, um, with, we probably need to be prepared for more work sessions in the future, um, some of what we have tonight, because there, there's, there's just things that, that we all know that we need to just clean up and, um, make it better on our, on, on citizens of Kingland County. And, um, and we just, you know, we're not going to reveal everything, I know that, that's going to be a definite, but, um, but the, but the, but the best arguments win today, that's all I have to say about that.
So I, I agree with Mr. Sluter and most of all the things that he had to say, um, just now, especially, um, as far as those who came forward this afternoon and spoke, um, as far as their experiences with county staff, it's very positive to hear that we're able to help and support those who come that need information from us. So thank you to staff for everything that you're doing. And thank you so much to all those who came out this evening. Um, I'm hoping in our work session tonight, um, that we can try to start addressing some of the things that we brought to our attention. Um, that's one of the things that we need the most in this county. We do not see a lot of people come to our meetings and speak out to try to help guide us, um, when we don't see things, maybe as others in the county do. So I really do appreciate you coming and speaking and making sure that we're aware of these things, so we can try to address them and make them the best for all the citizens of the county. So thank you so much for your attendance, and I'm hoping that maybe you'll be willing to stick in there and, um, listen for a few more minutes as far as us going into our work session. That you can see that we're trying to make some progress, um, trying to address those things that have brought to our attention. Um, and as far as our, um, speaker for the conditional use permit as well, um, these are the things that we really need to have when we're trying to make decisions, um, as far as the planning commission is concerned, as far as I'm concerned. Um, we want to have more people that come and give us feedback, so thank you so much.
My fellow board members said everything very eloquently, so I won't take anybody else's time, so thanks everybody for coming. Always thanks staff, they've done excellent job, I mean, really excellent. Yearing report that they gave us last time was spot on. Everything they do is spot on, as, as they have said, my fellow board members have said, they're just a pleasure to work with according to the citizens of the county. I think we are finally moving towards, as Mr. Callum said, but getting advocates meaning to find what they need and easily come up with these permits. Thank you very much. So we'll move right into, I can't adjourn because we're going to go into, right into a work session, so if anyone needs a big recess, we're going to go right on into work session. So we will just, not adjourn, we will just, the correct turn.
We adjourn and then.
It can be, do they, we adjourn? Okay, then we can reopen because we have advertised, we would just have, okay, so we will adjourn, do I need a motion for that or? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait a second.
Motion made, progress, to adjourn this meeting, uh, this.
Mr. Callum?
Yes.
Ms. Height?
Ah.
Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Mr. Sluter?
Hi.
Chairman Grayland?
We adjourn that meeting, so now we will reopen the, the work session. To order the work session.
Mr. Callum?
Here.
Ms. Height?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Sluter?
Here.
Chairman Grayland?
Here. We have amended the agenda, looks like we have amended the agenda, so I'd say we want to move F up to A. Uh, everything else is the same, but I have a motion to, uh, the meeting. Look, F being A now.
I'll make a motion to, about the, the new agenda, moving F to A.
Second.
Ms. Height?
Ah.
Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Mr. Sluter?
Hi.
Mr. Callum?
Hi.
Chairman Grayland?
We'll move right into work session A, the setting of accessory structures. Randy, you have some of the floors or?
We did, uh, what we did is we, um, gave you a copy of the apartment buildings, H seventy-three and three ninety-nine, and it shows in red the last changes that we made along the accessory structures. Um, as you know, this came up early ago, we were discussing this on the waterfront. Um, and so we made number six that allow, um, lots of the, uh, the, uh, oh, I'm sorry, that RPA, they were allowed one accessory structure on the front yard, um, if you allow it with the area. And then we also, uh, allowed access to structures to be in the front yard, um, if they haven't had a home of five acres or more. But we did, uh, set a size limit to not more than fifty percent of the main core of the house, and we had had a lot of people come in and. And, but the followers did come in and they talked with us. So we made copies, um, J S views, uh, their, um, properties to kind of, using this as an example. As you can see, they're all waterfront, this one provides a lane. Most of them don't fall under the five acres, they're less than five acres, but they're all long, we're, um, long lanes. Of course, everybody wants to get exposed to the water, and not just here, but that's everywhere, they want that water too. And even they did that and they were over the field. The neighbors would be very happy if it allowed them to have a nice big garage on the waterside that would block their view, they wanted to go down river. So we, they wanted to go look at this and see what we can do to change it. I did pull a couple of adjacent, um, counties, and then we're, we I cannot find it in there, I do think it was, they have returned, were called back, um, just related to, uh, Old Caroline. There is pretty much rates the way ours does as far as the front yard, or, um, I didn't see any ancient ordinance that addressed it. I can certainly, um, try again to contact them and see if I can, their answer will never, how they're addressing the waterfront.
Does it really matter to other counties? It sounds like we have an issue, it seems like we should correct ours. I wanted to bring up that, I thought previously we'd also discussed, because it's not just people that have five acres, because all the previous people that bought land, we didn't have five acres, but were there three acres, so a lot of people with three acres had the same issue, so I think that we need to address that while we're addressing the soul issue and something about that.
Well, I actually made a site visit down to Chelsea and, and looked at the site, and I'm familiar with the site, and from the house to the, the road or property line, as they state, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars. And we're, we're kind of confusing two issues, we have to be very specific here. When you have a waterfront lot that has forty or fifty, twenty yard and then the road, you have to worry about needing setbacks from the road and the ordinance of being able to put anything in front of the house. In this situation, the road is two hundred yards away from the house, so the road is not an issue. It's just, oh, we call it at the front yard or the backyard. If we're calling it the front yard, then that ordinance says that we can't have, I think, more than one accessory building in the front yard, and it can only be fifty percent of the total square footage.
Well, that is for, for ones that are over the five acres. We did put under number six, and even lots where the rear side door to indicate there's a resource protection area, one accessory structure, maybe located in the front yard in order to be outside the RPA.
And see, I, I always have a problem with that, because if you set your house a hundred foot back off the water, which is essentially the RPA, by default, your side door typically is not going to be in the RPA. So it kind of comes up a neat point. You know, if you need to setback from the river, unless the river makes you a tremendous turn and it comes up beside your house or something like that. And, and, and look at it, Caroline, Kevin, Caroline Kevin has the mound of the pole of the mound, and they don't have a lot of waterfront properties like we have. So, and, and that's not a, a good comparison. I think New Kent obviously has a lot of waterfront property, Essex has a lot of waterfront property, Canyon Plain has the same, um, to some extent that we have on the American ass, so I would want to see more along those lines, but I agree with Mr. Grayland, you know, we don't always have to follow up what people are doing. And I was very boisterous about this in the beginning. From what I saw, there's no reason why these folks should not be able to have, especially, uh, their subdivision ordinances and they were a private road are going to kind of mandate the style to look, and if the other neighbors are happy, I think we need to find a path to be able to accommodate that. Now, we, we are going to run into other issues, um, that we need to think about when addressing this, and, and I used, uh, the Woodbury Road, which is the closest one here, most of those houses are river house and roads forty, fifty feet in front or behind the house, whatever you want to call it. So we've got to look at it two different ways. Because in that instance, those houses can't need the setback. And again, I, I spoke out and I'll speak out again, when you, when you have a private road going like that, if you go to tap panic and go in most of your waterfront communities, they have garages immediately off the road, where you can pull right into immediately off the road.
And those are lots where the waterside, the side, and even some of the roadside are RPA. So the lots are small, but they've been in existence for years.
And then the age old question, you know, a, a waterman would argue with you all day long, the waterside is the front.
Yeah.
And a lot of counties call the waterside the front. And we, as a county, in the past, have called the waterside the front, and some of the older subdivisions, I don't know when that got changed, but again, we need to look at it two different ways, the ones, if we say, okay, you can allow the structure, but then to the folks like at Woodbury over here, where they can't need the setbacks from the road, do we want to make it so they cannot add an accessory build?
We have the same situation in town at the end of course, I think.
So is the issue, the definition of what a front yard is? I mean, is that, is that where we need to?
Well, it says nothing in front of the house, so if we're calling the roadside the front and not the waterside, then we, that's how they're getting caught in that, that loophole.
Right, and this is where thousands of members of the public pass behind the house, so as, as we would define it, um, whereas very few people pass in front of the house.
And, and architecturally, as they alluded to, the house is designed, so the front base is watered, and a lot of them have two fronts. But my, my personal opinion is the waterside is the front of the house, that's the way it is in most waterfront communities.
I think somebody, somebody brought up at some point, and one speaker's point, that other counties can choose which is the front. I don't know if that's a solution that we could adopt, I don't know if that opens up other, other issues or, um, or.
Or if we just put an exception of a river, that way it would be specific, if you could choose, you could choose anywhere, but we really want it to be riverfront, we can say, unless this is riverfront property and you are already, the house is already even in the RPA, or you can use that as, that way it wouldn't be a choice.
And, and to, to muddy the water further, no pun intended. You know, we, we also are going to have instances where we have to address streams and lakes and ponds. Typically, on a stream, a lake or a pond, the roadside is the front. Typically, in other counties, there are some exceptions to that, so how we handle that, I mean, that, that can be a, a discussion.
We can say water body instead of river, by the water that we can consider streams, rivers, ponds, but either, either way, if, if we have a seventy-five foot setback from the front and twenty-five from the rear, which is what we have, depending on what you call the front and the rear, with an RPA and a body award, but what you call the front and the rear could determine whether or not you can fit in there.
Well, if you have a, if you're on the water, you're going to have RPA, unless it's a man-made pond or something like that. So you'd have a hundred foot setback, unless the lot was in existence prior to the Chesapeake ordinance. Then you can call for an exception, but you still have to go through that exception process to reduce that amount of foot.
Whatever, whatever we decide here is, is going to be in conflict with our ordinance, part of the typical section, typical area where you've got the front of the house is the front side. Uh, so we need to be careful how we word this, or, or like you say, we may just make this an exception. I'm not sure how to put an exception into the ordinance, but, uh, that's where I don't make an exception to the ordinance.
That's where I feel like we need to change our definition of what a front, what a front is, and that, that keeps us consistently, consistent with, with other areas of the county. If we say we're the predominance of public traffic.
And as Mr. Callum stated, where you've got some lots, some waterfront lots that just have a very small backyard, where the house may only be a hundred feet, that setback, as you say, or.
Well, a lot of these lots also are on a private road, you know, private. But they're not, you know, they're not all busy, overgrown, some are, but the majority are on a private road.
But generally, generally, a private road is going to be, private roads are winded up. I don't know if that holds true everywhere, but, um, generally, that would be the case.
Well, Woodbury, that's now their road, which is private, once you get off, so.
Yeah, and, and as I stated last time, we talked about that fifty percent of the houses, they already had neurologists. So when, when the ordinance was passed, it basically said, hey, for you guys that didn't make it in, I'm sorry for your luck.
We have one that went through various process a year ago, um, where he put a garage in, in the front. And he just couldn't put it anywhere else, one because of the Chesapeake, and two, the subject was also in the front, so we had to put it in another corner.
Could we, could we simply say these are grandfathered?
Well, they are, because they were grandfathered, they could file for an exception to reduce that number of apartment. But as far as being in the front yard, um, he wasn't. But as far as being in the front yard, um, he wasn't, and he didn't need the front setback.
The one in Woodbury.
Yeah.
Not Chelsea.
Yeah.
I think of Chelsea.
But they're all on a private road as well and they're all long, not super narrow, but narrow enough. They're just very long on lots, every one of them.
If the front of the house is the riverside. Why can't you tell them this way?
And if we want to, um, either do it under definition, um, waterfront lots, the front yard should be considered the water slide.
And then have a provision instead of that, uh, the garage or accessory structure being given distance off the right of way, uh, of the private road. I think it can be resolved because we just, in recognition of the situation this brings up. Would stay up on the, work on that, come up to something.
We can. I did pull like some couple of them, but I did not find anything in the ordinance, um, any wording that allowed that. I know, um, this Pollard said that she talked to them and they left it up to the homeowner. But I feel like we need to have something in the ordinance, um, not just or, you know, we need to have something in black and white that people can go back to.
And to, to Mr. Wagner's point, by calling the war side the front, the RPA is going to take care of your setback. So that, that's going to guarantee you're going to be a hundred feet, unless it's an existing, prior existing lot. You get an engineer to say it can be fifty feet, which those are out there, but they're, you know, very few. So the, the RPA setback is going to pretty much guarantee that that house is going to be a hundred feet off the water. Any new structures being built. So if we call the roadside the backyard, then the question we have to change or what we have to change is the number of structures and the size. Cause right now it says it can only be fifty percent of, and I don't like that for the reason when somebody has a river cottage, a lot of times it can be eight hundred to a thousand square feet. To say you can only build a four or five hundred square foot building, it, it's kind of small.
We've had a lot of people complaining about that size restriction. But we also need to consider what the setback is going to be for example, the backyard that's on, on the roadside. Are we going to have them keep the seventy-five foot in the road?
We, we could also require some kind of landscaping to between the structure and the road.
So Sheri, if I may, so there would have to be two definitions that would need to be changed. So the front yard definition would have to be changed and the definition of, um, front or lot line front. So two definitions would have to be changed to meet what you all are asking. And so just keep that in mind. And so you can go one of two ways. Either you can add a definition, but then you need to modify two definitions. Or you could take out the restriction of the one, um, stating that they can only build one accessory structure and take out that size limitation.
And you put in a definition for valence waterfront?
You could, but you still need to modify the two that are in there because it references on front yard, um, a yard line between the front lot line and the nearest part of the building. And when you look at front lot line, that's where it references. Let me go here.
We also, maybe that's something that we might get, blocking regulations to change it in the definitions. But we, we need to put some logic in here where we had the other accessory structure information.
And, and the reality of this is there's so many different scenarios out here. It's going to come back to haunt us at some point. But I do not feel like the way it's written now is, is proper. But there, you're going to run into situations where there's very little yard between the house. There's going to be situations with, like they had where there's a lot. There are some situations out there where it's the house, the road, then the water.
I've seen that too.
So we're going to, we're going to, it's several, it's, it's impossible to address every scenario. But I, I heard in a, in a workshop several months ago, Mr. Muskowski saying, you know, let's not create a problem that is not a problem. How, how much of this will we really see right there? A couple of years?
Yeah, we, we don't see a lot, but we do see it. Um, but it does become a problem for some people.
What, what I've seen in other counties, the, the biggest problem, and you alluded to it earlier, is building something between the house and the water. Uh, that's why, um, in most counties and just about all, I believe they did away with both houses because it was blocking people's view share. So, you know, I, I think as long as we regulate what can be built in between the house and the water, which again, the RPA only takes care of that. And then the other thing we've got to consider, I believe it's in the ordinance that, uh, we can only have thirty percent impervious cover on the lot. So somebody's got to understand, they come in with a quarter acre lot and they've got a big house and a paved driveway and a sidewalk and flower beds and whatnot. That's impervious area. So they may have already exceeded their thirty percent.
I think people that are small lots have got the record matters on so much that you do. I mean, if you're in a thirty thousand, forty thousand square foot lot in a subdivision, you're not going to be able to do a whole lot with the backyard. So I think people with small lots on water don't get that. But, um, in situations like this where you have three, three, four and two lots, then, uh, it, it is a problem because those people have an expectation of be able, should be able to have a garage, a shed or something, storage equipment. Uh, you know, to, to me, I think it can be worked out. We just got in the fun.
And, and I, I like that in the case of Chelsea, again, it is in a historic area. It is in a subdivision with covenants at once. We, we will run into some situations where people want to put a four landscaping tubers and two sheets of plywood. We're going to have to address that as well. Just that, some sort of standard.
They are in the historical consideration districts, so.
Certain restrictions.
They have to go there for anything that they build in there.
So the, the couple we get a year, I mean, what, what's the, the fastest path for us to help these folks move forward?
They could need to look at changing the wording under the modifications, a lot of area regulations and do another definition for a waterfront lot.
And then that's going to go to a public hearing and then.
Follow up, need to hold a, need to hold a public hearing and then go to the board and they need to hold a public hearing.
Would it be a faster route than them to go to the BCA?
I mean, they, they always have that option. It's fifteen hundred dollars for them to, you know, take an application for the farm areas. Or they're in front of that, not the R and D, they have to show them in a workshop.
But we could, we could, could we as the planning commission give a favorable recommendation to the BCA? I would be in favor of that. If expedite is worth fifteen hundred dollars, if it's not, it's probably going to take at least three to four months to get a change in the zoning ordinance.
They wanted to make an exception.
Yeah, I understand we're making, we're, we're going to make a change and this is the time, um, with that being known. Yeah.
Can we also discuss something about, like I said, it's just specificities that is less than five acres. Can we take that out? Like a lot of subdivisions, I said, divisions, two acres and then any choice on five acres.
Do you want to make it districts? I mean, you, you just don't want garages in like the R one where you, you're in a subdivision where you don't have a lot of front yard and you don't want people.
But I think this has got to be specific to waterfront.
Just for words. Our subdivision.
Just so you guys know, right, right now in the R one, and I just got caught in this trap. If you want to build a building prior to building a house, you're not allowed.
That's what she told me too.
I mean, if someone has a five acre lot, I'm paying them to go out there and build a storage building to store something and it's not allowed.
Unless it's a farm building, like a farm exempt, it'd be a farm building. Or you've got plans and you're going to be starting a new house within a certain timeframe. Then you can get a convention for the garage or whatever, but you have to.
And that's an all-in?
I think that's an all-in.
It's not, it's not rest of the church.
I mean, I, I understand the ordinance because if you, if someone has a, a lot in McColling Park, I understand not wanting them to be able to come in and build a garage before the house. But if someone has a, a, an R one lot or something like that, it's not necessarily any subdivision. I can see someone wanting to, to build a building prior to building a house, but I mean, it's.
Like some of these riverfront problems, a lot of people used to build the dock first before they build the house. But you can't do that because that's accessory structure, so.
Well, the docks are permitted, but the accessory buildings aren't allowed.
So again, a bunch of different ways we need to look at this as a group. But as far as these folks, I think we addressed kind of the, the fastest path to achieve their goal.
You know, like we can work toward changing the definitions and.
Well, one option that's out there for them is to go ahead and proceed with the application of the BCA. And as Mr. Calvin said, we could make a recommendation to these. Either individually or as a group.
And I think the, the BCA, what they hang their hat on is, is, is an undue hardship. I mean, I think the undue hardship was created by those other units. And I think one could make that argument. I understood the intent of it, but again, there's so many different scenarios. Somebody who has acreage like this really got caught in that trap.
So we're going to come back and go with, um, some changes to the definition for waterfront lots and, um, make some changes to the, um, modification to the lot. Um, maybe looking at number six and putting some garbage in there. Do you want to make changes to number five where they can actually build a part of the yard if they're on a lot less than five acres?
Yeah, we want to do that. And the fifty percent.
Cause when you, when you talk about waterfront lots, the majority of your lots are not five acres.
So we will wait for that for our next meeting.
There's only going on that one as well.
I just wanted to ask, um, Mrs. Graham, if she could, um, make sure that the audience knows if we try to proceed with making some of these adjustments, what the process from here goes and what kind of timeframe we're already looking at trying to potentially advertise for a public hearing to try to make some other changes in our ordinance as well, just so they have an idea of a timeline. Um, not that we have a, a definite time right now, but if you could explain that for them, I'd appreciate it.
If they didn't want to pay for the addition of fifteen hundred, now they weren't really in that much hurry, they could have made it.
So what will happen at our next meeting? If we come with a decision, then if y'all are ever with the definition and the changes of the modification, um, and this is what you want to bring forward. With our next meeting, we have to advertise for a public hearing, hold a public hearing. Y'all would vote to approve it or, or change it, recommend, recommend approval. Then it would go to the board. The board would, um, hold a public hearing and they would vote to approve it, deny it. So you're looking at probably three months?
I think the changes we're talking about making will capture a larger part of the audience. And for the unique situations, you know, that's got to be easy, we can work on it case by case basis.
Like I said, we have a few other ordinances that we have already ready to be going there. We'll just group them all together and go along that long.
But it does have to be advertised to this private community. So, um, and then of course, we have to hold a meeting and make a decision on it prior to their, um, board for a public hearing. So, uh, at least three months.
Right, as soon as with the three months, it might be longer before we can get through all of that.
Everything's a perfect condition.
Thank you.
If we move on to the discussion of the citizens and.
This has come up before and when the ordinance says only, um, it's changed to a one entrance for your liners. Um, and then I think the majority was in agreement to, to share driveway for two lots. Um, so that's something that we need to look at considering. The only thing that we may want to keep at the same, if it's all thirty or three sixty, because we used not to allow the liners, the simple lots, all converted to three sixty and we'd be nailed. Um, and we had enough like entrances close together. So in most cases, we, we may want to keep the one entrance for the liner. But I think we should keep, um, both, um, the, the shared driveway for two lots. Or if they want to just use the one entrance for the four lots, they have the option to do both.
Mr. Perry, I'm amazed. I can't let this pass. This ordinance came up for a very good reason. As you all know, we had the survey put out there. The majority of the people that answered that survey wanted to keep the rural areas that accounted for rural. There were a lot of comments about getting rid of the minor subdivisions. So in order to sort of satisfy those demands, keep the minor subdivisions, but at the same time, reduce the impact on rural areas, we voted for and approved and the board supervisors approved the one entrance to the minor subdivision. That, um, we require a grid system within the subdivision. This would be, depending on the design of your subdivision, usually the pole design. So you would have that. Do have, uh, just a sketch that I'll. This, this sketch is made. They need some administrator prior to you, the plan director prior to you. What was his name?
Ron Edder.
Stratter.
No, no, Ron, that's.
Oh, Beth Shor, Scotty O'Shea, oh, Casey.
No, no.
While the, uh, pardon?
It wasn't, it wasn't the same place.
Casey Shor.
And Mr. Horton, he got one developer to develop some, some of the systems. Sketches he put, there were more sketches than him. And the Kenwood subdivision, um, got six hundred, uh, he got that developer, the Kenwood subdivision, Kenwood subdivision. Kenwood subdivision. But. I would just argue against this. I know it's already been done, but. But that's just to give a little background on it, because when we developed it, the ordinance, we were trying to satisfy a lot of issues that the rural areas account. And this was one way, and to be frank about it. It was one way to minimize the number of. Of nine. How it was that? Maybe we don't want to.
Yes. Ms. Graham, you're familiar with the subdivision. That's the way I'm speaking up on West River Road, six hundred.
Yeah. So before you get to.
You were church.
Subdivision treatment, I think.
Would, would that subdivision be allowed today, the way it's built?
Yes.
I believe that's correct.
No, I'm not.
Because it does not have a paved VDOT entrance. Three houses or more has to have a paved VDOT entrance. And that, that's grounded.
Was that not the difference?
Well, I mean, if we're pointing to that as a model that we like, that actually is not allowed over the current ordinance. It says.
The lowest, the lowest.
Like the VDOT says, three houses or more.
If you've only got two houses, you're not. If you've got three or more houses, VDOT.
Right, but the VDOT says three or more houses have to have a paved entrance with radius fifty foot wide.
Exactly.
That does not have that.
No. That entrance, I can't say for certain, but that entrance is about twenty five feet wide, twenty four, twenty five feet wide. I'm not sure. Doesn't have a page.
So I mean, that, it's hard to point to that as a model if it doesn't meet the current standards.
The, the model is basically. And it does have to be, if it doesn't, doesn't meet VDOT standards, then we might do it, but what, what is proposed in the ordinance doesn't.
That, that subdivision does not mean.
Well, I said. If that, if that entrance doesn't meet VDOT standards, okay.
And we just, we keep pointing to that one subdivision.
Model of the subdivision. That.
How many houses? How many houses in that subdivision?
Looks like there's four.
Yeah.
I tried to pull up a street view, but I'm going to have to look.
Now, how were they able to build that subdivision back then? Because then did we have it in the ordinance where it could have frontage on a right away instead of the road?
We did years ago. They were allowed to do, it was up until seven lots. And it would be on the primary road. So we do have quite a few of those around. They do have a fifty foot width requirement, but they're not paved or, or the entrance is paved on most of them that I've seen. I've not seen this one. I don't know, but I'm just.
And I did, you know, again, we, we beat this to death, so we already have staff recognition, we already talked about it. I would just say, the, the survey, we've argued about that, what participation you got in that, and you know, a lot of the county, a lot of people in this room live in minor subdivisions of gravel roads. So I think it's hard to make the argument.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm making that. I don't make any problems. But as I said, we all agree with it. So we've got to go.
So we need to bring the wording to your public hearing. But that is one thing we want to keep both. As we talked about before.
I just feel like, and looking at Mr. Wagner's renderings right there, I mean, like the top three, I see where they, that absolutely makes sense. That as he's, as he's catching up, but like the bottom one, I don't, I didn't like the bottom one that had you have one, one entrance into twenty two houses, and then you got to feed the outside ones from behind. I, I, I think that there's going to be instances where where that approach, just, just because of the way that the lots lay and where they perked at, or whatever, whatever the case may be, you may not even do that in that situation. And I think having both options gives some flexibility to that, and I don't know if there's, that some language. I don't know if there's language to add to, to try to encourage one where, one access where possible, but but I just know that not every scenario. Is you're, is you're going to have to produce number lots or yeah, which of course, if we're a developer, you know, it could be different. It's not a day or not.
Well, the other, the other thing you have to look at too, and you have four houses on one gravel road. Everyone has the same rights to that road. So that in itself can create issues with road maintenance. Kids running four wheelers up and down roads, stuff like that. So again, you I, I agree to the, the four, the four entrances. We cut it down to, you know, two lots sharing one entrance, we reduced that entrance by about fifty percent. I just you know, people have a hard enough time getting along as it hits, you start, they have to share a road and have road maintenance agreements and arguing over who.
The one, the one issue is, there are two options that you have there. You can go to state maintenance, just take standards and then we go to VDOT. Then you don't have any. It is those to a property association, you're right.
But I think what you know, Mr. Wagner, is if you make it where it has to be built to VDOT standard, you achieve your goal, because it's not feasible to build a VDOT road for four lots. So you achieve no minor subdivision, which is the objective.
I meant to, there, thirty eight years of VDOT. Can't, can't be done.
So I mean, six, six hundred feet of VDOT state road with a cul-de-sac. You just can't afford to build that for four lots.
No, whatever. I got to bring this up. Let me ask you a question, Ms. Graham. I think you, in the last report, you indicated that a font that subdivision had been. Where is that?
I don't remember the address. They only had one, since it was put into ordinance.
Has that been developed yet or? I'll check with you later and get.
The park steadily was two lots.
And I, I will say, what you said earlier, I totally agree with the one entrance on thirty and three sixty. I think that's a must. So I will agree with that.
That's one of the things that I just wanted to point out. I, I see both sides of this, you know, the situation. What both of you have said tonight, but the one thing that I would certainly want to make sure that any type of wording that we get bored with as far as thirty and three sixty was concerned. Because that's, you know.
The last. Agree.
We're in agreement that. That's on just these on thirty and go with both scenarios. I think.
I would like to see, you know, what staff comes up as far as wording is concerned and how's getting from there. But I, I would like them to proceed with trying to put something together for us for that, for us to discuss for our next meeting.
That's okay with that.
I don't see, I guess Alex, we need to see the discussion of recent parcels on three, three sixty.
So, parking fifty four. Put a nice list on three sixty and local parcels. From the owners addressing the current uses, current company on the acreage and what the future land use has on it. And we've also provided a map of the proposed water line down three sixty. And we have the neighbors, which I want to look at along with the the reset for these. And we also in your packet is a copy of a letter that we drafted of something that you asked for. And then that if we want to identify adjacents of an upcoming meeting for proposed, for a reselling that we would send out for. But this is one step in bringing everything together to comply with what we approved in our future land use map and also in our comprehensive plan. So this is a start. Even if we only resell the parcels that are currently being used for commercial or, or other parcels may be adjacent to it, and the property owners want them reselling during this reselling process. But we really need to look at this closely and along with our map and, and see what we want to do in these areas.
Have questions? Ms. Graham?
Have you had any kind of discussions at all with any, anyone that's currently business use?
There is a email from the commissioner of revenue on there's some questions that came up about the taxes. So you should have that, that would probably get the payment out tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
So I saw it. I believe within your last couple of board meetings, you guys approved a position for the EBA to hire a full-time EBA director, is that correct?
Yes, it passed by the majority.
So this is, this is my concern. One, King, King William's not a business friendly community as it stands right now, and we're trying to change that, but one of the one of the obstacles we have, as I've stated before, somebody's looking to come to King William, we just do not have anything to show them. And we're basically going to hire an EBA person, make him eighty thousand dollars a year and then some with benefits. And, and to do what at this point? They, they don't have a product to sell. My, my opinion. If, if we, if we took some key pieces of the county, not everything up and down the highway, but some, some key pieces where it made sense, resumed them, that at least would get us in the game if we had somebody looking to come to King William County. We could, we had, hey, here's twelve or fifteen options of where we could put you pretty quickly. And I know the arguments been made, we want to have control over what comes to the county, and I think in our prior conversations, we could put in our use matrix what we absolutely do not want in the county. Now, I think we have to be careful with that, and I think you're going to have to get a lawyer to take a look at that, because we want to make sure we don't create any type of discrimination. Certain things we say we don't want in the county, you do not want. But my, my opinion is just this, if if we're going to grow as a county, we, we already have a, a bad reputation of not being business friendly. And when someone comes here, they have to jump through a bunch of hoops and a bunch of red tape, they're just losing interest in us and moving on. And if you look at surrounding counties, you, you see every day where counties are announcing. I don't know if you saw New Kent Counties is getting muckies. That's huge for New Kent County. Now, we, obviously, we do not have railway or the interstate, we're not going to attract something like that. But there are a lot of uses that we could attract here, but we have got to turn the tide a little bit and, and, and just make it a little easier for people to come here, if that's what we want. If that's not what we want, then, then keep it the way it is. But you, you can't say we want businesses, but we're not, we're not going to help move to that direction, because the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. And we're getting the same results over and over. People are looking at King William County to come here, and they're just getting turned off. The lack of properties available and the timeframe that it would take them to get their business up and running.
What, what were you wanting to say? I'm the director of economic development. You know as well as I do. The EBA has found a. They've never come. They had two guys working about forty, five thousand dollars a year, that never accomplished anything. The EBA themselves have not come up with anything responsible to study they did was pretty much useless, but somewhat nearly the study. I'm the director of the EBA. When we hire the record EBA, we need to get somebody that's got got the, the knowledge, the, that is connections with the development community. We were able to get a warehouse developer out of the middle of the high. All that was done last night. EBA has pretty much hands off on common property, that property is there. If we bring that up to snub, bring that subdivision up to snub, we're going to be checking, we're going to be sure in there. And once that gets up to snub, we're going to have some good lots in that. Possibly some good warehouses that go worth it. But until we get someone to manage that group that has the knowledge and ability to do it. They're not. Well, I don't say they're not willing to. You got somebody coming here for the end of departments. We've got parcels that are some now as commercial. That somebody can come out and go ahead and develop. If you're talking about project, warehouse that would are ready to put somebody in or something like that, no, we don't. EBA has the ability to buy bonds or sell bonds. But anyhow, they've got the ability to get to money to go ahead and develop properties along with the six. They have not shown in interest any ability to do that. So the smart move by this candidate and the majority of the board of supervisors, board of head hired the director of economic development, somebody that has knowledge, has connections. Can't be adding the members of the EBA to do what you're inviting the best for. That was a smart move. About the staff and board. If anything, right now, we should be working, before we look at rezoning, and we should be working with. See what that, we're not developing. EBA is a semi-developed. So they can do that, we can't. It's not our mission, our goal. We, we set the future land use map, and whatever comes in here, we, it's not our goal to go out there and rezon properties. We, we set a future land use map based on what we want the land.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I would say is, I, I, you know, I think I've expressed my concerns before when we originally started this about trying to do some, some bigger scale of rezoning along this corridor. And I'm not really in favor of that. Um, but I think we started this process before we even had any idea that the board would entertain hiring somebody's staff as far as EBA is concerned. And what we were trying to, to, um, come up with is properties that would attract business. I'm absolutely for that. I do think we need to find a way to do that. Um, this list, and I really do appreciate staff putting that together and how detailed you've put everything together. I'm not really, personally, I'm not at the point that I could say, okay, certain ones on this list that are current use in commercial, that let's go ahead and move forward with going ahead and making sure that, you know, zoning meets what the use is of the property yet. I think maybe since the board has moved forward with that EBA position, I think maybe we need to give this a little more time to have them hired on and then try to pursue how our approach is to help that person to make these properties available. And, and I'm not trying to delay the process. I do understand that we need to have properties in order to try to attract that business. Um, but since the board has made that decision, I think it would be wise to see what that person's take on this approach would be. Again, we started this before we knew that that position was coming. And, and so we did it because we didn't think that there was going to be anything else to try to help provide something that would attract business. But that's just my opinion.
That's what I said. Because we could have a meeting with this new person, one of our regular meetings, and ask them, would it help you if we turned in?
Again, if, if they see it as multiple properties that we could do, that we could try to do that rezoning without it being a cost burden on the property owner, then I'm absolutely for trying to support that effort in conjunction with that EBA person. But I'm a little concerned about trying to take that one upon ourselves because our opinions may very well differ from what that person that we're about to hire sees. So again, that's just my thought on the situation.
Just to leave it, do you have any concerns?
Yeah, I've got, I've got some, just kind of mixed one out now, definitely see your point right there. Um, and I guess my, my concern is, well, two, two things really is, is the, the lack of, of action on EBA in somewhat as a result of properties like these not being zoned correctly, or it's something that we, that we have set in place, um, whether it's ordinance-wise or zoning-wise, that, that is, that is hindering the process of potential developers coming here. Um, and just a quick look right here, I found nine parcels that are vacant, uh, greater than fifteen acres, uh, hundreds of acres total, uh, that are all vacant and, and zoned. Um, mostly zoned ACs are through there, they're in B2. So, so the, of the nine parcels, three are already zoned B2, but the others are still in AC. The, um, I mean, we, we, we've thrown out the term before shovel ready. Um, and I don't know when it comes to anything development-wise. Yeah, real. Um, but we do, we do see these developments that are coming to different areas around us. And it's like, you know, all right, how are they, how are they landing these? And yes, in some cases, New Kent is right on Interstate sixty-four. Uh, Hanover has an air park, Interstate ninety-five, Interstate two ninety-five. So there's so, certainly some, some advantages that those areas have. Uh, we do later not have some advantages to where we are. We are the gateway to the Northern Neck in my opinion. Uh, and there are certain socio and economic factors, um, that are, that, that are distinguishing characteristics of the Northern Neck. Uh, for example, you don't see, if you drive there up the Northern Neck, you don't see a whole lot of, of Walmarts and Fergers, Publix, and so forth. Uh, what you do see are a lot of Dollar Generals. Well, somehow companies, those Dollar Generals have to receive their goods. Um, so I'm just using that as an example. Could we be a distribution center-friendly place for that Northern Neck part of the, uh, part of the state? Um, just like I said, just kind of stuff to come to the top of my mind. So, we don't know when companies are looking to make those kinds of decisions. There could be one looking at it right now and looking at Essex, Tapahannock, King and Queen, and so forth. And we don't, we may not know it at all because they're looking at, at our, at what we have in place right now and saying, they don't have anything that matches what we're looking for. That's my concern with the longer that this takes. However, I certainly definitely agree that if we get an EBA person in that says, okay, y'all need to take a look at this parcel, this parcel, this parcel. And we need, these need to be changed because of the location, you know, proximity to public utilities, uh, or I've been talking to somebody right now, and this is what they're looking for. Um, then we got to go about rezoning that, how long does that process take? So, it, it's really catch twenty-two. I don't know that, we're certainly not all going to agree on the process for sure. But, um, I don't, I don't, I don't really know our role because it's, it is, it's very complex. But we do have a little bit of a time to, you know, give sensitive backup to it. And at the same time, we also don't want to rush into doing things that we might regret at a later time as well. So, I, I don't know.
The, the Milton-Nez-Zealas as a development, uh, what is it, the, the, the campus was in for a while.
Oh, the Milton-Nez-Zealas Alliance?
That's a personal thing, Mr. Commission.
What, what is it?
Milton-Nez-Zealas, Mr. Commission.
Well, not, not PDC, not PDC, but there was a, a group in, in the Milton-Nez-Zealas that was helping to bring development into the Milton-Nez-Zealas, more like an EBA.
Regional.
On the regional. I was just wondering if they, if there are any aspects coming through, through them that would help us. But who's on this community now?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add this, and, and I do not disagree with Ms. Wagner or Ms. Pike. You know, if we want to get an EBA director in here and see what steps they will take, I, I feel confident they're going to look at it and feel like we need to have some properties rezoned. And they'll shore up what we're saying and move forward. I don't have a problem with that. I want y'all to look at this from a little different angle, but the young lady at Central Crossing tonight, if that piece of property next to her, which I used to, could have been a different use other than apartments. We've got to be careful with the parcels we do have that are in the comp plan. People coming in buying them up and saying it's in your comp plan, I want to put more funds, more apartments, more this, that, or the other. The more parcels we can have zoned to B2, it takes that out of the mix to where it's guaranteed to be business and not more apartments. The parcel next to her, if that parcel had, was rezoned to B2, then they would not be able to do the apartments correctly. And then she would have been, she's never going to be happy, but she would have been happier than having three-story, four-story, or, you know, maybe she has an office complex, you know, garden style of one story or something like that. My concern are, there are some big pieces, and Mr. Schlitter kind of alluded to it. I'm, I'm not talking about half acres, four acres, or even an acre, I'm talking five acre plus. That particular parcel was eight acres and they're going to put a hundred and eighty-five apartments on it? We, I do not want any more of that. I would publicly say that. I can, we, we've got enough of that already approved in the mix. But the way our comp plan is written, we really do not have a lot of grounds. Unless they don't meet some criteria to tell them no. But if that property was zoned to B2, and that's the angle I'm coming at, because I would rather see the commercial than the businesses than I would a hundred and eighty-five more apartments anywhere.
But can I ask this question? Do we put ourselves in a position of when we're trying to solicit, I guess you could say, what properties we're willing to help get rezoned? That the others that may be along the same corridor say, okay, so why did you choose that property and not my property? So now I'm going to have to pay to rezone, but you've chosen select ones that the county is willing to take to rezoning. I, I guess it's, that's just been looming in the back of my head. How do, how do we select out of this list in that scenario which ones we're willing to help that would prevent them from having to pay that fee and not? You know, if we restrict it in any way?
We, we haven't talked about it, but I'm not a fan of just giving it to, I would say, still pay the application fee, just expedite the process.
Everybody? So it's not really free to even the ones that we do.
I mean, if, if somebody comes forward and says, if somebody comes forward and says, hey, I have a property that I'd like to rezon, what's the application fee? Twenty-five hundred dollars? I mean, I, I would say that if they want to rezon, they need to pay the application fee. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go, I mean, that's, that's not something you would expect me to say, but that's the truth.
So is that what staff, is that what staff saw in how to handle this? Or is that what y'all were thinking, or how, how, how were we trying to get to the approach of expediting?
Yeah, that's something we're going to need to look at because I don't know if that's something we can do. But we can go back to the matrix and look at, um, instead of some of these uses being permitted by R I, maybe requiring a CUP, which, you know, it's zoned as B1 or B2 for certain uses with approval of a conditional use permit. That allows you to put conditions on it. So you have a little bit of control what goes in there.
So, I, I think we can breathe, and I'm, and I'm all for, let's get the EBA person, whenever that may be.
Yeah.
And, and see what direction they want to go. I'm fine with that, but I just wanted y'all to understand where I'm coming from, living here in the county and hopefully going to die here in this county one day. You know, these parcels that right now in the comp land can be more PUDs, can be more apartments, more stuff that I don't want to see personally.
I appreciate, I really do appreciate you sharing that information with us. It's something that I, I guess I hadn't really thought about from that perspective, so thank you. And again, I, I'm not trying to slow down the process by what I've suggested either. I really do want to make sure that we're trying, you know, to do the right thing and make sure that we can draw that business here. It is hard to see the other counties getting some of these large businesses that helps their county that, that we're, you know, stuck right now and haven't, haven't gotten to a place that we could be ready and prepared for that. So, again, when we get someone in, I'm all for, you know, making sure that we can help support that person in whatever their efforts are.
Sounds like we're pretty good.
Definitely. One of the groups, not that, not that the county gets against development or anything like that. We haven't had one in several days, but right now, the county is working toward providing governance or, they've got a short-term and a long-term plan for doing that. And it's going to take that a lot of time in order to get development. You might develop a fabric, building a separate tank, but getting a kind of measure of development here is going to take that for sure. And that's going to take, we're not going to have silver for for two thousand and twenty-five, in addition to silver. Uh, until we get the water tower built and extend that water line and then move on to the next phase. So that's part of the, the, the county is moving, actor, victim, for the twenty years, twenty-three years that I've lived here, the county has finally moved toward getting the things we need to drop. It's not that we're not ready to develop, definitely not that.
Yeah, well, let's move on to use matrix, so they'll sort of include that with what we're discussing.
We've been taking that as part of, unless there's something.
That's a specific item.
You know, if you kind of, if we can say we do not want, legally, legally say.
Yeah, we could, there's a, um, script clause.
But what the ordinance says, if, if not this, and so what we have done, like the script, we did really good.
Oh, really?
But did we put it in industrial area only? I think you were told.
Right, I think we had to because legally, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying. I didn't know it's discriminating against somebody, whatever their pleasure may be, to say you can't do it, you can limit it to certain areas. I just, I think we lost all the use metrics a little bit.
I think it's an extraneous. Not that we can't.
Adults.
Don't want to allow. Basically, what you're saying.
Let me, let me see. Maybe we can separate it.
Yeah, it didn't put the area.
Yeah, because I know my cell, the lawyer told us we couldn't. Absolutely. I, I know Tapahannock ran into a little issue with a vape shop. Nobody wanted the vape shop in town, and it's got, you know, stop machines up there in the vape shop.
Actually, we, I think we had a trouble with the one coming in 360 because they told me they had a lot of trouble coming here. I don't know if it was us.
So I just, I just, I don't know. I'm just wondering what can we really say in the use matrix that we can say what we do want, but if somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to do this here, will we say, no, you can't?
So it's, so you don't go through the process, rezoning, whatever the process, which is quite a lot of ground.
There's specific items on that one. Okay, now we may have just short-term ranking, we have a couple of issues on that one.
While, while she's looking for that, I, I think we approved it up to the board, and then the board unanimously, they still have not approved that, in my opinion.
Um, it will actually go back with them at their meeting this month. They, um,
Are we getting any recommendations for that, or?
No, that's right.
Lord, wonderful, recommendation from us?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of where I was going with that. One, one of the things that, uh, that I've done a little research, and, and I, I would say we had approved it, and I think the board kind of ran those folks, they came back and, and addressed all the concerns and jumped through all the hoops, and I felt like it should have been approved.
I, I would have to say one day. Attorney, Judge Ponderman is not judging.
Great. But we shouldn't be in receptions than we did.
I, I think the thing we need to try that, and set it up to the board, is approve it the way we approved it with, with a twelve-month timeline. In twelve months, if there's no complaints and everything goes fine, we do it.
That's, that's, that's what I don't understand why.
I think that's fair.
Yes.
I mean, is that something that should be maybe in that ordinance to begin with? Is that it's reviewed annually for any issues?
Again, if, if they, right, if they get several phone calls, noise ordinance, you know, just people carrying on doing whatever, they're just simply on the. I mean, even Judge Bondurant can endure it for twelve months. Even I like it if he can, and knowing that at the end of twelve months, it's over. As long as he sees the light at the end of the tunnel.
We're, we're in a position now where we've got more capability, they've done it. Do, do, and more. So we've got to either, the board has got the.
They did it on just the opinions of what people thought, like that.
That we had, and they seen the. They could have said it was in trouble, I think. Um, but we have a long list of items of concern and every single one has been addressed in support fashion. Um, yeah, that, yeah, I feel like we, we did our due diligence with that, as did the applicant. Um, if we had a further, um, yeah, I think putting something requiring of an annual review on it, I think is a fair, um, and, and, and a way that we can make sure that if there's any issues that, that, uh, that they can.
Yeah.
I like the suggestion then, if, if I may, how much burden would that put on you, Mrs. Graham and, and staff as far as, not necessarily just with this one application, but if this sets a precedence of where it goes forward? If there were more to come, how would that, how would that, would that become a burden to y'all if it was a twelve-month review? That would give y'all an opportunity specifically to look at any kind of complaints that might have come in, although you're tracking those, you know, other ways?
We haven't had that many. I don't think we'll have that many that it would be a burden. Uh, I have been doing a little bit of research just to supply the board supervisors with some information. And I attached some of that to your paperwork just to look at, um, from what that, what other counties are doing. But, you know, it, it wouldn't be, there's not that many of them that were going to have an issue. Um, I did not have a chance to talk with our county attorney, but I see that, um, they tried to pass a bill on some of this. Um, which if they do, if it passes like, and I did attach this, um, then it's going to take some of this out of the county's hands.
That would be conditionally if it's run by a real estate agency, from what I read.
Setters.
Which was, was one item that was discussed. For us, was, that would be a solution that, that would help things because it would give a local presence for the rental.
And I could not find where it had been approved. I, I searched and searched. So I figured that the county attorney may know where it was gone.
If we put the twelve months in there, I mean, we could also put it in there that staff could renew it for twelve months out of town. They wouldn't have to come out and go through the whole process again. If there's been no complaints, no concerns, staff could renew it. If there had, had been some complaints or concerns, then bring it back to the highest commission board and go through it all over again.
And we could maybe work with the commissioner of revenue, or she would not renew another business license until they got that legal approval by the brand new office.
I don't think the board had formally come back to the planning commission for any type of recommendations. Um, but I'd like to throw it out there to the planning commission, um, with Mr. Kellum's suggestion and what we just, what you just said, Mrs. Graham, as far as, um, the commissioner of revenue, um, to maybe write something to the board that says, you know, a fund for their, you know, thought put into this. We'd like to make that suggestion as a planning commission, um, to have that as another condition that might make it more, I guess you could say, for lack of better words, appetizing for them to consider. I, again, I, I think you probably put some other information together for them, but I think from what we've talked about tonight, we might, as a planning commission, be agreeable to adding that twelve-month review.
So they were under the impression that all the conditions we had on there weren't enough. So that's what I didn't understand. That's like, we really worked on that. But like you said, we've seen how many times they came to us and we added all that. That was a lot of stuff. And I, like you said, I thought they kind of bent over backwards to change things for us, but then the applicant.
But I, but I really like. Another item on that, the, as far as ordinance goes, uh, in the, under number six of our ordinance, six A, uh, letter I, it says, um, a short-term rental business may be suspended or canceled for the following reasons, and letter I states failure to collect and/or remit the transient occupancy tax. Um, when I reached out earlier in the year to, um, the commissioner of revenue, and I'm not getting my hand out on this. I'm not trying to throw anybody over the bus by me to listen to this. Uh, present this as a priority. Uh, if we are going to have any kind of short-term rentals, whether it's a Airbnb or a, um, future micro hotel, um, we need to have this in place. And I don't know what kind of pressure that maybe Mr. Green could play on the, on the board. Maybe he's got some pull there. But, yeah, I guess what bothered me was that, um, she stated in her email, as you can see, that, um, she was told to wait until after the election. I, I don't see where that's necessary. Um, but and, and obviously there's not much tax to collect at this time, but it's hard to, it's hard to want to approve these things if we don't have our ducks in a row, where ordinance matches our, you know, our tax structure, for example. Um, and, uh, and, and right now, supposedly Airbnb, it's viewed as places automatically take the tax out of the payment. So where's that money going if it's not coming else? Um, so anyway, I just went through this to, to put a priority on, this needs to be addressed and it needs to be pursued before somebody builds something and then claims grandfather status or something like that, that, uh, that we can't, uh, collect on that. I mean, it's a, it's a, I know nobody wants increased taxes or anything like that, but this I think is a very, um, very common sense.
That's what I wanted to put in. I wanted to point, since you brought it to my attention earlier, it's like you said, it specifically states in our ordinance, failure to collect and/or remit the transient tax. Yes. Then when you ask, we don't have one. So why is it in our ordinance to collect it if we don't have it? That's what doesn't make any sense to me. And like she told us, the, the applicant said they took about six hundred dollars out of everything that they paid to this. Where did it go? We gotta get it.
I don't know how many nights that they had ringing for, because I think seven hundred dollars a night would damage. You do a hundred nights, I mean, do, take.
They have money somewhere in a fund that should be.
Yeah, it's just that the county hasn't received, received that in fashion because we had no way to.
Yeah, I think she asked her that question specifically. You know, where, where's the, you collected and where's that?
Maybe talk to her. Taken from? Yeah, yeah, we could just find out because she's.
She makes a, off, off topic a little bit, but it's just like, uh, when somebody builds a new house and they collect taxes. If the county doesn't ask for them, they will send them home. I mean, that, that's huge in this county. The, uh, the title companies take the taxes out at closing and it sits in their escrow account until somebody from the county asks them for them. There's tens of thousands of dollars sitting out there in escrow. And just like direct TV, if you don't ask for a cheaper package, they'll give you a cheaper package.
Other things, like you said, same things, you know, getting business licenses, where like I said, I think smaller contractors, if you were telling me about, I think we can change that fee structure too. All those companies are getting away, not having a business license and not getting any of it. Small minimum business license would be great to have.
Would, would any of this fall under the E D A director? Which is as far economic development, developing these type properties, collecting that money, making sure.
I don't think the collection. Tax and business licenses.
That I read, switching gears a little bit, but I read in, in the budget from last night about how the, how the, uh, escrow money actually was finally being collected in a timely fashion now. Which is good. I read that in the budget last night. So, so that's a good thing, but there's so many other things out there. This one property that's collected that kind of money and it's sitting out there in accounts somewhere that all we've got to do is be smart enough to ask for.
They need to dance on that particular one?
So is there, I guess the one change in the ordinance, we really want that as an annual review, correct?
Uh, this is going to the board supervisors this month. So do you want me to do a note with this information to them? Just so they, they have it?
Yeah. Mr. Greenwood, being a, Mr. Chairman, being, being a, a board representative here, are, are you able to speak on behalf of the planning commission with this concept? So you, you can say, hey, we the planning commission.
Well, I did that at the last meeting. I thought I was shut down. It's like they did not care that we came up with all this. And I said, they met all the qualifications. I don't know what else I can say.
You did, but I think this one-year time limit would be told to everybody.
Yeah, that's just one more thing to the twelve that we already have. They didn't make it, they didn't like.
But that one gives, that gives everybody.
I'll be real optimistic. I'll do it. It's not going to work.
I'm going to do a memo anyway, with this information for them.
Their minds are set.
But if you don't mind, I'll.
Because they can add it in as a part for that particular application.
And we could have had an act. The board could have, but they did not have any, any inkling of even entertaining it at all. So.
What specifically could have been the board, yeah, to do if they sent it back down?
They didn't send it back. Yeah, they didn't send it back. They just tabled it and.
Till next time, we'll do it now.
I think there was that they, um, parties involved and neighbors, so they. Or you know, which we.
Travis is like, decisions not supposed to back in here. That was like the good old old mentality before I go. Like, that's what I hate. It's happening again.
Okay.
Pay you the. Okay, right. Hurry up. Pay the awards.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I refer you out there at the timeframe that we got into this evening? I, I think I would like to be a little more, I guess you could say, prepared with the P U D ordinance for a discussion. I'm wondering if, um, we would want to try to do this at our next work session that could be after our next meeting. Um, instead of trying to get all the gent to this tonight, I think there's still a lot of things that we need to discuss regarding this. And I don't think we want to get in the middle of it and stop and, and just go to another.
Well, it's going at ten o'clock, so you don't want to rush through it.
No.
Everybody agree with all? Right. And we can, we can bring it to the next. Should we, uh, go ahead and say work session after the next?
Oh, you do have another public hearing, um, next month. It's Barbo House. Um, on right upon, I don't think it's going to be a lengthy one. Um, we could do the same thing that we did tonight.
Ms. Graham, regarding the public ordinance, um, have you seen anything since we, since the board has approved the, the other one?
And does anybody have anything they would like Ms. Grant to? Yeah, to, and to, maybe just a quick, it may not be honored just to her to give us more info about it.
The, my, my only concern with the public ordinance as well as the R one, I was shocked to learn with an Apollo project that they would have none of the square foot. They just said that.
They got it from someone that it wasn't in their resource.
I mean, thousand, twelve hundred square foot houses, certainly we don't want a lot of that. I think the approved apartments address the, the needs of the people for housing. But we certainly don't want a neighborhood full of twelve hundred square foot houses and the way it's written now. And they don't really specify. I asked the question a couple of times and they, they answered. So, again, we didn't want to backpedal tonight. And what is it?
I want to say it's like twelve fifty.
To the recreation.
They've changed all that. We just talked about that last night. So that's a whole. Totally different plans. Feel altogether.
Well, they, they have three things in the, the progress. Um, but all of it is for either road going through the park, um, waterline expansion or recreation. But, um, if you want a copy of the final progress, I'll have this for you the next, the sign.
You want just, I mean, give me that one for. That time to recover that?
Taking motion, does anyone think we're going to do something? I'll make it. I should be properly said.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Slitter?
Hi.
Mr. Kellum?
Hi.
Hi, Jeremy Greenwood.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. I'm taking a little long one.